And we are live.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, January 4, 2021, Virtual City Council Meeting. I think that's the first time I've said 2021. So welcome. Happy New Year to everyone. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Mr. Keeler?
Here.
Mr. Peterson? Mr. Reiner?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Marjorosa?
Here.
Ms. Aludo?
Here.
Ms. Amos Grooms?
Here, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussion relative to the purchase of property for public purposes, or preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and thirdly, for personnel matters to consider the appointment of a public employee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Marjorosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amos Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Very good. We will reconvene this meeting at 7:00 PM following our executive session.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Maria. I see where a few have joined our meeting this evening that haven't had an opportunity to test your mic and sound. If you are interested in doing that, we can do that. Kim Wei, do you want to test your sound with me? Move on to Tammy. Hi, Tammy.
Hi, Maria. I'll text. Oh, no, I don't. I'm here. You should be here pretty soon.
No worries. That will be just fine. Just want to give an opportunity if one wants to touch. I'll go ahead and put you back on mute and we'll touch base again.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, good evening. This is Kim Wei. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Thank you very much for touching base.
No problem. I'll go back on mute.
Perfect.
Hi, Maria. Can you hear me okay?
Hi, Matt. Yes, I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Maria. This is Dana. Can you hear me?
I can, Dana.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
All right, sure.
Maria, is there a way to test the sharing screen?
I'll have to take down my old posting here.
Okay, if it's not a big of a deal. I just was curious. Since we're sitting here waiting. Does that all look good?
It does. I see the full screen.
Great.
Nice job, Matt.
Yeah, I get a bullseye every now and then, even if our force swings back and forth.
Hey, Matt, is that 2021 or 2020?
That's the question. I'll change it. I've got time.
Okay.
Thanks for catching that.
Yep. Just skip the interest slide. True.
Hey, Maria. It's Homer. You probably want to go ahead and move the sharing permission to me.
I'll do. Hello, Mr. Close. Thank you for joining us. If you'd like to test your sound, you can do that at this moment.
You guys have the hardest system to get into for meetings that exists anyplace.
Sorry to hear that.
Hi, Chris.
Maria, I think we're waiting for Greg and John.
Okay.
Are we live at this point in time?
Yes, we are.
Great, thank you. Okay, it appears all of councils here. Maria, are we missing any folks that we anticipate to be here for this portion of the meeting?
I'm verifying with my list. Give me one moment. Possibly Kathy Lannon. And Jay Expular.
Okay, well, we will go ahead and get started. Hopefully Kathy makes it in because I believe she will be relative to the Historic Dublin Task Force conversation. The other gentleman you mentioned, I believe, is not until a bit later on in the agenda. So we will go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome to the January 4th, 2021 Dublin City Council meeting. In these extraordinary times, we are grateful for the opportunity to have the ability to eat, to meet virtually, given the current endemic conditions. We appreciate the state legislature has allowed us to do this. We certainly are very concerned with the safety of our staff, all of council, and certainly the general public. In order to submit any questions or comments during this meeting, please use the questions and please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to us by the Director of Communications and Public Information during the meeting. It is vitally important that we do all we can to accommodate public participation in these meetings. To the greatest extent possible, we welcome your comments. We would ask anyone to refrain from inappropriate comments. We thank you for your patience as we do make our best effort to make these meetings as seamless as possible. With that, I will ask our resident veteran, Homer Rogers, to lead us in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Homer. Okay, um, first item on our agenda this evening is a special presentation. It's the recommendations from the Historic Dublin Task Force. I believe that Tammy Noble and Kim Wei, the chairperson of this task force, will have a presentation for us and it looks like Jenny Rouse is starting the presentation. So all of you, please, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. The Historic District Task Force was assembled by city council in the latter portion of 2019 with the exclusive objective of entertaining the ideas of creating a historic district task, excuse me, an area plan for the historic district, which was originally part of the community plan in 2007. When the Bridge Street District was adopted in 2013, it incorporated this area. And city council had thought it appropriate that we revisit the idea of whether it should be its own special area plan. So we've assembled a group and I really want to give thanks to city council for a wonderful group of people that we've worked with over the past year. We've had some very engaged conversations with very insightful objectives for the historic district. And Kim Wei is our chair for the task force and I just wanted to introduce Kim and give thanks to both city council and the task force for their help in this endeavor. So if you don't mind, Kim, I'll go ahead and hand it over to you.
Excellent. Tammy, thank you so much. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, so good evening, Mayor and members of city council. As Tammy said, I'm Kim Wei. I'm the chair of the Historic District Task Force and I'm pleased to represent the task force tonight to share with you our learnings and recommendations for updating the historic district area plan. Next slide. We began our assignment, whoops, back one. We began our assignment, January of 2020, which was, sounds like a long time ago now, and glad to be out of 2020. And I've had a number of task force meetings and input, and input across the city of Dublin, including outside interest groups such as the Convention Bureau, Historic Society, Historic Business District. And then we've also had a series of meetings with city of Dublin staff, which have been utterly enlightening finance, economic development, engineering, parks and rec, and planning, which has really helped us to formulate these recommendations. Next. So along with members of staff, city council, and the full task force, which gave us a whole perspective and what was happening not only locally in Ohio and nationally, but really helped us understand what types of things we might consider as we think about the historic district. And then we also had the opportunity to meet with the Architectural Review Board view our draft recommendations and to get their input. And that also was extremely helpful in formulating our final recommendations. Next. So as we sized all of these learnings and the task for we picked up with a wide array of recommendations and categorized them into kind of three main areas of focus, which we'd like to share with you tonight. One is creating an updated historic district area plan. The other is considering management options for the district. Support the districts and try to creating short-term successes as we move forward. And for the brevity of this meeting, and again, I appreciate you putting us on the agenda first, so maybe brevity wasn't so urgent as it was in the last meeting. But we've just kind of, we're going to sit on the main topics without going into depth. And I'm sure that all of you have received a copy of our draft report, which then has subbullets under each one of these 12 recommendations that I think are worthy of you paying attention to and considering. Next. So we start off with the, this list of recommendations with gateways. And we, we spent a lot of time talking about the district in general and talking about how the, the district is kind of north and south. If you approach the district from east and west, you have a, you get a different impression of it. And there was a really strong feeling amongst the task force that we need to celebrate and recognize the Historic District physically in a different way. And it's on coming from the east across the bridge that we felt like that is less, it is coming from the west. You've got the church and the school really feel like you're coming into something different after having traversed from the west. And so celebrating the gateways was a, one of the first things we really kind of settled on is something that was important. Streetscape design was also a huge discussion. I think we recognized that the areas has had a lot of investment in streetscape, especially with the new projects. Rehigh and the library and the Crawford-Hoyne Development, that that area is really starting to come together as a place through the street. But we felt like the, the South High Street where attention needs to be. And fortunately throughout, through the process, we had the presentations by city staff to share with us all of the great work that's actually ongoing right now in terms of improving the streetscape, not only along North High Street, but new sidewalks and circular the, of the district. And so I think in this particular bullet, we're really focused on supporting the work the city is doing now and the investment that the city is making in improving the, the south part of, of district. Parking was, was as a professional involved in planning, parking is always the number one issue that people are sensitive about and concerned about, and there's never enough parking. And I have to say that I was shocked that it was not a focus of the task force. The task force thought there was plenty of parking. Pre-parking, but we, we did recognize that the existing parking needed to be improved, enhanced from a fiscal standpoint. And that we had a lot of discussion about how different districts are managing parking in terms of new so as people come to park in an area that they can go on an app and they can quickly locate where parking is available. So again, what's a, an important part of our recommendations is looking at how to better manage parking. Parks, obviously the Historic District is bounded by a lot of great parks and open space and ones that are being improved and, and new parks being created, especially on the north side. But we were also struck that the South, kind of a little of, of parks and open space and we on the north side. And as people move through the, the south part of the Historic District, can we integrate some this is to kind of create a network in the south part of the district. Uh, but a, a strong feeling of really creating that, that extension of the existing natural environment. Then we talked a lot about the, the need for an anchor, perhaps for the district. And there are several parcels, the Car Barn parcel and the parcel across the street, we thought were opportunities to really bolster kind of the, an open space anchor on the south side. So given the, the open space discussion, uh, we really, really focused on emptying the corridor and that is an existing city asset. And that, uh, development, uh, if the school site was ever to be redeveloped. Or, or as it, as it moves through the Historic District and also providing better access, better overlooks, you know, really engaging the Historic District with Indian Run, perhaps in a bolder way than it is right now. South Street Vitality, again, this was a lot of focus on conversations around how North High, the North High Street District is a lot of investment and a lot of new development and a lot of things happening, but, but be done in this, the South High Street area in terms of encouraging activities there that would bring people to that part of the district, which again, the Historic, the, the task force really feels like that's at this point in time is the most intact part of the Historic District. So let's really celebrate that and bring people to it and to enjoy it. The diversity of use, um, again, we, we appreciate a mix of uses and we want to really encourage that. The task force felt like the ground level uses aren't all uses that really are people facing and encouraging activity. Uh, there's a lot of service commercial uses on the ground floors. And so one of the, the recommendations is that we encourage more residential and service commercial uses on the second floor of buildings. And encourage more uses on the ground level that are things that people can really engage with and that really draw people to the district. On the preservation side, as you can imagine, this is a huge conversation, and certainly there was a lot of interest in preserving, uh, what is historic in the Historic District and making sure that we don't lose it. One of the task force members actually said, we're going to wake up one day and there's no, there's not going to be anything historic left in the Historic District. It may look historic, but there may be nothing left. And so there was a lot of passion about wanting to preserve from the, you know, from this day forward, uh, from this year forward, everything that's historic, really pay attention to preserving that and making sure that we don't let that deteriorate and, and just again, go away. So again, preservation is a, a huge recommendation of the task force. Next. For still development, I mean, we all recognize District is, you know, noted because of the scale of the, the residential scale of it. And we don't believe that we should lose that. And so we want to ensure that any new development, even if it's replacing something that's old, still, uh, carries the same proper height scale massing of buildings. And that we try to maintain that scale and character, no matter what happens in terms of renovation of existing buildings or, or new infill development. Connecting the district was a lot about, uh, not only, uh, kind of within the district. There's, there's a lot of emphasis now with the new bridge, uh, connecting over to Bridge Park. People coming across the bridge into the north part of the district, but really trying to encourage people again to move to the south. To take advantage of, of unique assets that the south part of the district has to offer. And not only that, but also this is a city-wide, so and I know, we know Dublin does a great job of pathways and bikeways and connections. But really trying to make sure that the Historic District is connected in neighborhoods that adjoin it, to the business districts that adjoin it. And really encourage people to walk to it, to take advantage of it and, and really celebrate it as a place. Um, tied a little bit to finding, um, and really creating the right signage and graphics that, that encourage people, not only from a vehicular standpoint, but also from a pedestrian standpoint, to move through the district. And we talked a lot about, you know, signs that not only are about wayfinding, but also talk about the history of the district. Markers and, and so people can walk around and, and learn about the district. And even having, you know, an app that talks about the history of the district, so you could walk up to a sign with a, with a QR code and, and scan it, and you would find out something interesting and different. And using that kind of technology to help people not only move around, but help to tell them about it, tell them about the history and, and what it's all about. And then also a, a lot of discussion around arts and culture. A really interesting discussion. We had a presentation on the new bike racks, uh, that are being promoted in Bridge Park and, and, and the, the conversation around whether, um, you know, what type of art is appropriate and does it become the art in the Historic District? And I think generally that we're just, we felt that we want to embrace all sorts of art and cultural artifacts in the district, new and old, but we want it to be a place that does celebrate arts and culture. Next. This is, this is a big one, and we may want to have some discussions about this, but management of the district was a, a huge conversation. And a lot of the Heritage Ohio interface was around how, how we might think about management. And I think task force kind of characterized the whole management conversation around, you know, who, who's the person or entity that wakes up every morning and worries about the health and vitality of the Historic District? And I think we as a task force felt that there needs to be that clarity, that entity that really is responsible and, and making sure that maybe all these recommendations are followed and, and implemented. It's, it's, it's not a part-time, you know, position or a part-time effort. It's a full-time effort to really look over the Historic District, working with all of the other entities that are involved with it, engage with them and become kind of that, that collector of, of knowledge that can really support the Historic District long-term. Next. And then the, as the third effort was around short-term successes and certainly a lot of efforts through the existing organizations about celebrating the history of the Historic District and its background. And we want to see that continue. We want it to continue to be seen as a place within the city of Dublin, within central Ohio, to come to and learn and to see how the history of a place evolved. And we think that there's a lot of work that still be done around that, uh, both in terms of preserving the history. Knowing about the history and just celebrating it as a community. We, we want to ensure that, um, any updates to the Historic District code and guidelines are compatible with the overall vision for the district. And so that's obviously a work in progress right now. Hence, we met with the Architectural Review Board and, and others to make sure that as we're putting together guidelines to preserve and enhance the district, that we do it in a way that is clear and fair, that everybody's treated in the same way and that, that every, um, investment, every, uh, landowner, investor, developer, all feel like it's a fair process and that we're all working towards the same goals and objectives. So, um, based on the work of the Historic District Task Force, we are here now in front of council, looking for your support. I'd like to thank every one of our task force members. As Tammy said, they've been great to work with. Specifically, specifically Kathy, um, who is my vice chair. Um, she's actually lives in the Historic District, so her, her perspective has been really incredible. Um, like to thank all the organizations in the city that helped kind of inform us and work with us. Uh, specifically, uh, working with city staff and Tammy and Jenny have been great guiding us. And councilperson Fox, I thank you for your, kind of pushing this all forward. And councilwoman Keeler, you showed up at a number of meetings, so I appreciate your support too. And we're here to, tonight to really look to city council to, um, support the final conclusions and recommendations of the task force. And I look forward to any questions that you may have. And Jenny and Tammy are going to bail me out if I can't answer you.
Well, great. Thank you so much. Um, appreciate you willing to join us again this evening. I know you were with us last time and the hour got late and the, um, topic was too important to rush through. So thanks for circling back again this evening and taking the time to be with us. I'd just like to open up to comments from council. It looks like Andy.
Yeah, so, um, Tammy said it and, and Kim said it as well. I think the, the whole group from staff down to the task force members deserve a tremendous amount of recognition for the, just tremendous amount of time that you put in. Um, Jenny, Tammy, Sarah, um, and then, as I said, Kim and, and the rest of the task force. If you read this document, you'll see pretty close documentation of all the meetings that they had, either in person or virtually. A ton amount, a ton of time went into this, a great deal of thought. I think you did an excellent job of distilling down the concepts into a way that we can kind of filter through. Most of what you talked about, Mr. Way, was, um, you know, aspirational goals. You got into some of the tactics and some of those are pretty intriguing to me, like the QR codes. Uh, scanning with your phone and being able to, um, quickly identify, you know, the, the, the significance of a property, the history, all those kinds of things. One of the, one of the things that came up in one of the meetings was this concept of a trolley. And you see these um, in the short north, you see them, uh, at Easton. Um, this, this council is very interested in mobility and connectivity. Could you talk a little bit about that? And, and how much, um, I guess, how much conviction does the task force have with respect to that specific, I guess you could call it tactic?
So mobility, I'm a great believer in mobility and, and I, we do know that Dublin has mobility plan, and I think the Historic District needs to be a significant part of it. Anything, anything that we can do as a city to move people from north to south through the Historic District, I think is, is a plus. I think the key is that when you have a, something like a, a, a trolley system, you need to have a beginning and an end to it. So a great northern anchor to a system like that. And I would really encourage that if, as we look at options like that, that we really would encourage some kind of an option on the south side that would, would give a reason for people to get on a trolley and, and go down to Car Barn or that site or, and activities that are happening there, or maybe even, uh, other redevelopment, um, ideas that might happen down there. So I think it's a great idea and certainly something that, um, should be considered moving forward.
Thanks again.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Christina. Sorry, my mouse was all messed up.
Oh, good. Thank you so much, Chris. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, thank you so much for all of the work you did. The report is really wonderful. Um, I, I really like a lot of the recommendations that y'all come up with. And I think the, the next step is, you know, how, how do you actually, what are the tactics to then implement some of those recommendations? I'm a little bit curious about how the conversation came up in terms of parking and the potential for apps, because that is something that was a bit of a contentious conversation not that long ago. And we were told that the Historic District really did not think that was a great idea, particularly on the south side, because there were folks who just felt that the owners of some of the shops and things would not adopt that kind of technology. So um, it, it's super interesting. It's very cool. And, and you know, things of course change over time. They always do, right? So I'm just really curious as to how that conversation came about, how it went.
Well, well, it's, it's interesting because again, it was back to the problem, right? I mean, that's the, that's the first conversation, right? I think that, that the, um, management thing came up with the app in general. Because we, when we talked about the app, we talked about it from a wayfinding point, we talked about it from a historic, you know, information standpoint. And they said, well, why don't we put parking on it too? And then it's all in one place. So that's really, it wasn't a driver.
I got you. So it was a little bit more of like that sort of holistic approach where if you had some type of technology that could help with all of the, now that makes really, that's brilliant. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That was super, super helpful. Cause I just thought that was so interesting and I love the, the digital wayfinding opportunities. And one of the other things that I really, really love is, um, the opportunity to do some education by way of both technology and signage. Cause I do think that's a piece that's missing down there quite a bit. Um, cause like, you know, I'll take my kids down there and I'll explain this, that to them or that to them. And they're like, well, where's the sign? You know, cause most places you go that, that will have historic areas do have placards or things that will tell you whether it's an app or what have you. So that, that idea in particular, I really, really enjoyed. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. Um, Kim, thanks very much. And the task force, I thought the report, the work was tremendous. I thought the report was incredibly well-written. Um, and that's not an easy thing to do. So appreciate you. Um, and that's not an easy thing to do. So appreciate your work and your work with your staff. Um, if you were to to say, from the committee's perspective and yours, um, if there were two things that council should pay attention to in 2021, um, not that all are important, but where do you feel that the strongest emphasis from that group was? Because this, there's, there's a pretty significant hill here, and I'd very much appreciate your perspective and the group's perspective on that. Thank you.
Well, that's, thanks for a softball question, because there's two things I think that to me rose to the top and one of them um was was kind of really, was it really interesting and very heartfelt conversation is back um, people don't want to see this district um that it's almost like let's put a steak in the sand and said, we're not tearing down anything else. Plus, it's like falling down, it's a health, safety and welfare thing, and I think it says that in the report. But the 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 historic district integrity is at risk and that we should stop tearing down anything that can can contribute to the historic district. And I know that's probably a blanket statement, but it was passionate. There's passion um in the Task Force about preservation and making sure that we don't lose anything more that's historic in it. And people, it was really funny because people would just say, oh, yeah, another building was torn down this week and you know, it was kind of like cumulative over the course of the year, like, whoa, how many buildings have been torn down since the Task Force has been meeting? And and maybe they had, I don't know, we didn't get into those specifics, but I think we would really, really like council to think hard about every time uh uh the opportunity comes in in front of you. Um, is there something historic that's preserved? That's that, that's one that was very passionate. The other was the management. Um, there's a lot of entities that are that are involved with the district. Um, and a lot of people doing good work, but there's just not that that one stop. And it's not just for, it's not a tourism thing, it's not a it's, it's like if a business person, if a somebody wants to come and open a business, where do you, you know, where can they go and where can somebody really help them? Where should they, you know, go, you know? Is there a place that that's already available that they could go into? If somebody wants to there to live there, you know, what's, what are the houses, you know, it's really, I'm sure those resources are, but if there was like one uh storefront in historic district, then there was a person there that you could go in and talk to and they could tell you everything that you need to know. I think that's the, and and those, and that person is in charge in uh in managing the district um through whatever entity that council would would like to um consider that you've got that one-stop shopping in terms of um resources to support the district. Those are the two things. Next year, this year, that's right, it's this year.
It's this year. What are we paying for? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, uh, just a couple of questions. I I I get the idea of having sort of quarterback, you know, who would be like you, the way you put it, Kim, was I think, I think in fact, the way to put it, they wake up every morning thinking, what can I do to make sure I help the historic district? There are, and as you just mentioned, there's a lot of different entities though. You know, you've got a business community, you've got a commercial community, you've got real estate developers, you have residents. Um, you have that live there, then you have the residents of the broader community who are interested in that. And so it seems to me that in a lot of those groups, there are not necessarily different agendas, but their, maybe their priorities are a little bit different. And and I don't know how, you know, it is, so this is my first trip through uh my second trip through council. I start all the way back in nineteen eighty-six, sitting on city council with John. And we talked about the historic district then. I mean, it's always on the minds, I mean, I'm I know Judge Close is watching and when he was mayor, I bet you they talked about the historic district on that council then. And the challenge of of preserving this, this, as you know, as time goes by, it begins to deteriorate. And that's just the nature of things. And you can look at the the building right across the street from the from DVT that the challenges in renovating or retrofitting or doing whatever you would have to do to bring that back to a functioning commercial site, something that would attract people is financially has been at least up until now financially less prohibited from the person who has the interest in the financial wherewithal um and the interest in the ability to pull it off. Those things haven't met up. And so unfortunately, that building, which is incredibly cool to go look in the window, all you gotta do is go look in the windows and you can see history in front of your very eyes. It's like looking into a a kaleidoscope. You you can see what it used to be like. But it's still empty. And it isn't because nobody has the desire or nobody necessarily has the interest or the the hope, the desire, the wish, whatever. It's just those things haven't come together to to result in that place being purchased by someone who can do something with it uh that would be supported by the broader community. And so what happens? Well, time goes by and it continues to deteriorate. And so um I get, I I if there were a quarterback that we could appoint, um, and maybe his name is Kim Way, he's the guy, uh, but someone that we could appoint and careful what you wish for, Kim, or what you volunteer for. Um, the the struggle is the same struggle that I've watched um for now twenty-four years since I was first on city council. You know, it is, and back then, the the first issue that we struggled with, at least that I did, I'm sure that they talked about it long before me. There used to be two gas stations sitting on the corners of that intersection. And so there have been a lot of resources and a lot of time and a lot of attention, and I think everybody could, you, we could get a unanimous vote that preserving, protecting, defending that asset of our community is hugely important. That will be the place, that intersection, and looking around that intersection will be where my kids come back to, to show their kids where their hometown was. So so we all have that interest. My frustration, and I'm sure everybody has, and and I'm not necessarily saying anything that, and maybe I'm just being a master of the obvious, but but the challenge is all of those different entities have a different way of looking at this. And the interesting about the historic district is for every single person, it doesn't matter how far away you live. I live in Coventry Woods, so I could, I, you know, walk down there all the time. It's personal. You know, you feel like you have a personal state in those structures down there because that's our hometown. That's what makes this place nostalgic, because right across the street, you can see the future. But the past is also being preserved. So the challenge, and I and I greatly appreciate all of the time and energy, especially under these just bizarro conditions we've all been living for the last year, for for you guys to put the energy and the dedication into this issue is truly a labor of love and it is really appreciated, um, I I know by my fellow council members, but my my, how do we, and so for now, twenty-four years thinking about this, I want, and maybe the the placards and the entry features that really designate where historic is, maybe that's something we actually can do. Because I think everybody has the same um kind of intention, uh, but everybody has a different way of looking at it. And so if you're, you know, that real estate developer or someone who can't actually shovel on the ground and do something, you may look at things differently than someone who, you know, lives down in the historic district somewhere, and they may have very different competing interests. And so how do you find the one path forward where we aren't just talking about things, but actually doing something? Because as we're talking about in a meeting, stuff's getting older and older and older. And and so it is, the clock is is ticking, and you're right, you know, we may wake up in fifteen years and there's nothing left, because that's the nature of, I mean, w- w- we had to sit and watch a house up on Brand Road get torn down that nobody wanted to see torn down, but there was no, there was no other choice. That that was the only option from a practical standpoint. So how do you stop the clock ticking on the things that are deteriorating and put in place an actual um implementable plan where we can do these things that we all really desperately want to do?
So the person wakes up every morning that worries about the historic district has an organization behind them. And they may even have an organization that has funding from different sources. So it's not just a person, but it's an organization and money. And um the Main Street program, and I think, you know, council should look, you know, strongly at that as as one option, but that comes with, you know, it's an organization, a Main Street program is an organization that manages a district, have a Main Street, a Main Street manager, that's the person that wakes up every morning. And then other, oftentimes, Main Street programs then have a development corporation behind them, which is actually a funding, so they can generate funds and money. Um, if you're familiar with Over the Rhine in Cincinnati, that's a very, that's a, that's the the typical way that you invest in historic districts. So that organization is is actually out there buying up buildings, seeking funding uh to renovate them or even seeking investors to renovate them or developers to do it. It really, it it, you gotta have the 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 funding and the mon- money behind it to make this stuff happen. It just, you can't rely on the private sector just to do everything. I think there's an investment. And again, money can can come from all sorts of different sources, and there's, there's all sorts of different funding through uh, and as you guys all know, in terms of different ways to finance things. But I think it's not just, it's the person, it's the organization, it's the funding capacity to actually do things that can't normally be done through normal circles. That's what, that's what it's gonna take.
Thank you for explaining that, Kim. I understand better your point, um, and you now have my attention. So I I appreciate you explaining that.
All right.
Yeah, Jane.
Yeah, you know, I think Greg, speaking to your point and and after hearing what Kim had to say and living down here and working on uh the ARB and and being a council member and and really sitting in and listening to what the Task Force said, the major problem has been is that there's, there's no comprehensive management of the historic district. So when it comes to visions or or ideas that come to the forefront, they get thrown into a pool and the pool sort of dissipates and maybe some good ideas get used and others don't. And if we had some comprehensive management, even though I know that everybody has differing um interest, but a comprehensive management person can help a business find the funding, help the building go through a a planning process probably much more efficiently than one trying to manage this process all by themselves. Residents are are very burdened by owning property in the historic district. And because of that, they're burdened because of the restrictions that are placed on them, but there's no funding for them either. Um, we might be able to find management to be able to meet the needs of both residents, businesses, things that will will lift every, lift the whole boat, besides the fact that what what I really love about the historic district Task Force suggestions, every one of them, your idea of connecting the historic district across a large area of the city and connecting the neighborhoods, going from Franz Road to Sawmill, to be able to envision that, we need a driving force that maintains the progress of these recommendations going forward, because we all know that we have had a lot of task force and these papers get on the shelf and nothing happens after that. They're great ideas, but they don't go anywhere. We need a driver, we need the bus behind them, and we need a cargo van to follow the bus to make sure that we get these things moving forward. But a comprehensive management of the historic district will lift not only the historic district, but the Bridge Park area as well, the entire core of the city. If some of these recommendations can be moved forward on a regular progressive plan by an entity that pays attention and keeps it going, I think it's going to be one of the most visionary things that we'll do in the next ten years. And I thank you, Kim and the historic Task Force for all, I know how much work you put into it. One other thing, it's seventy-seven pages of notes and every page has something important on it. So, you know, I I know that, you know, as as Andy asked you about mobility, your ideas about the Indian Run Ravine, connecting greenways across the, all of these things are are so beautifully described within the notes that that, you know, get a cup of coffee um or a glass of wine and read the seventy-seven pages because they're fabulous. So thank you, thank you, thank you for the work you did.
Well, I uh, there, there is so much here, and thank you so much for the work that you've done on this. I guess I would ask council, I think it might be appropriate to refer this to committee, um, perhaps the Community Development Committee uh or something of that nature to um you know, pour through this. And obviously, we missed the the budget cycle, right? So whatever it is that we would be looking for this, we'll have to have some budget consequences and things. Some other things relative to that. So if it would be acceptable to everyone, um, I would like to go ahead and refer this to committee uh to begin the work on this. Um, and see what what can we execute on in the near term and um maybe put some priorities together. We, you know, we heard from Kim of of his thoughts on the priorities and uh align those with budgets and so on and so forth. So is that acceptable to?
Uh, Chris, can I make a suggestion? It's such a, it's, it's so many recommendations that possibly looking at uh splitting it between committees so that we can all have an opportunity to discuss it within a committee, parts of the recommendations, maybe divide out something that's appropriate to community services, something that's appropriate to pub, I mean, to community planning, to um, you know, I I think it's a lot for one committee.
Well, I don't want three or four chickens running around with their heads cut off, not knowing what the other's doing. I think we probably need to start, we'll start with prioritizing. Um, and and then maybe refer pieces to the finance committee, right, to to say, how would this be funded? Um, and maybe refer to to some, you know, to admin on, you know, oversight and how would this be managed and so on and so forth. If if we assign it to multiple committees, we might have multiple committees working on the same thing at the same time, coming to different conclusions. So I would recommend that we send it to one committee uh that would divide up the task that would be appropriate for the other committees to discuss.
That sounds good. I just think that, you know, I think that it it has its feet in in lots of different places and it's so big and there's so many recommendations that um I I don't want, I know how fast these committees, it's hard to to swallow all of that at once. So I I think if we, if you can do that and have the committees make recommendations to subdivide it would be, would be good.
Okay. All right. So i- is everyone okay with that? I don't know that we need to do that by motion unless Jennifer Riedler's face magically appears on my screen and tells me that we have to, we will just go ahead and refer that to the Community Development Committee.
I think we should have a motion, Mayor.
Good. Thank you. I will make a motion that this uh work be referred to the Community Development Committee. Um, and then they would subdivide it and pass it on to the additional committees as would be appropriate. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank all of you for your seconds. I think I heard four at the same time. With that, Ann, would you co-roll?
Uh, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner. Mr. Reiner. Um, Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Okay, hey, Kim, thank you so much and thank all of your uh fellow workers, and we really do appreciate it. And again, apologies that we did not get you on the last uh meeting agenda, but we sure are sure are thank, ooh, excuse me, sure are thankful to have you with us here this evening.
As I said, it started off the new year, so thank you.
Andy, did you have something else or just waving goodbye? Okay, all right. Thanks so much. Uh, all right, we will um okay, uh, we will move on to citizen comments. Uh, this is a time that the general public has opportunity to weigh in on anything that is not on this evening's agenda. I will ask Ann if we received any public comments through the clerk's office.
And we have not.
Thank you. And I'll ask Sue if we received any through the web.
And we have not.
Great. Appreciate that. Okay, uh, there are two meeting minutes on our consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, uh, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Ann, would you please co-roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Um, Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to ordinance fifty-four dash twenty of second reading.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate purchase agreement for certain property located on North River Street owned by BET Investment One LLC, the Kaufman Company Limited and River View Street Investments Limited, authorizing execution of related agreements. authorizing execution of related agreements and documents and appropriating funds therefore.
Very good, thank you. And I believe Jennifer Raidler will have our staff report this evening. So Jennifer, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Ordinance 5420 was introduced at the December 7th meeting. This ordinance proposes the position of six parcels along the west side of North River View Street and two parcels along the east side of North River View. Staff retained C T L engineering to perform a property condition assessment for each of the seven residential property. With the cooperation of the sellers, those inspections took place on December 10th and 11th, and the report is summarized in the packet. There have been no changes to the real estate purchase agreement since first reading and might close this year at tonight's meeting representing the sellers. The town recommends approval of ordinance 54-20 and happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Want to take a minute for comment? Ann, have we received any through the clerk's office?
No, we have not.
And you and Ann through the web?
We have not.
Thank you. Okay, council discussion questions?
I guess this is kind of dovetailing with Mr. Way's presentation. I think this is a huge opportunity for us to shape the development of that area and preserve, potentially, hopefully, preserve six or seven more properties. So I'm in favor of it.
Great, thanks, Andy. Any other questions, comments from council?
I've never seen it how it could go.
Okay, hearing none. Ann, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Close, for joining us and making yourself available to answer questions, fortunately or unfortunately, I don't know, we did not have any. So appreciate your time.
Go back to drinking my wine, thank you.
Okay, introduction, public hearing, vote resolution, resolution 01-21, our first of the year, here we go.
Reappointing the current city manager and authorizing execution of an addendum to the associated employment agreement with the city manager.
Very good. Thank you, Christina, for an introduction. For this issue from the admin committee, the chair of that committee, Vice Mayor DeRosa, so please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in my capacity as Chair of the Admin Committee, I am bringing forth for your consideration tonight Resolution 0121. As council is certainly aware, we have been working in discussions with the city manager over the last couple of years regarding succession planning as the position of city manager and as a city staff as well. And as outlined in the resolution before you this evening, several key steps of that particular transition are well underway. And as part of that work, Dana informed us of his plans to retire, but also of his agreement to continue in his role and his leadership role during the two-year transition period to help us put that succession plan into action. So therefore, the resolution provided for your consideration tonight reappoints Dana as city manager post his retirement and provides an addendum to Dana's existing agreement with city council. I'll just point out a couple key components of that new contract. The first being that Dana would retire effective January 29th, 2021, and be rehired by city council effective February 1st, 2021. Dana will continue to serve as city manager and will serve at the pleasure of city council through February 1st, 2023. Dana's salary will result in a modest reduction to the cost of the city during that two-year transition period. There are other components that are outlined in that memos, but those are really the key points. And therefore, because city council continues to be confident in Dana's leadership and his performance, and we sincerely appreciate his commitment to work with council and with staff to guide us through a smooth transition. Tonight, I'm recommending to council approval of Resolution 0121. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Ann, I'd like to check with you if we received any public comment, excuse me, in this resolution through the clerk's office?
No, we have not.
Thank you. And through the web, Sue?
We have not.
Appreciate that. Council questions, discussion? I think we all appreciate the work that's been done and will be done and look forward to proceed with that. And it gives us certainly some clarity to the future for the city. So, Kathy, I know this was a tremendous amount of work and I certainly do appreciate you so diligently going after these details and assembling this information for us really is quite helpful.
You're welcome.
Oh, Jane, yes?
Yeah, no, you know, I think it's important right now to say that in having Dana stay on, that we appreciate the fact that we were going to have him. That during the time of this pandemic, he's been unbelievably great for us. The transition to the time when he won't be here and we have a new city manager, I think the public should understand that this is really going to help us get to a better, a place where the transition is going to be healthy for the community. And having him with us here in the next couple of years is really, is really a blessing for the city.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing further, Ann, would you please call roll?
Sure, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you all and thanks Dana for your work on this too, really appreciate that.
Well, thank you, thank you all for your confidence in me to continue to do that. I greatly look forward to continuing to serve the city. Thank you for that.
Okay, under other on our agenda, we have our South High Street Architectural Review Board feedback and our staff report this evening will be brought by Matt Ehrman. There he is, welcome, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. You'll recall the July 27th, 2020 council meeting. Staff presented options and recommendations for the streetscape improvements along South High Street in historic Dublin. As a brief review, these improvements are needed as a result of the planned A E P tree pruning project and the overall decline health of the trees, which deemed it necessary to remove the majority of them, particularly on the west side of the street. Replacing the trees and provide the needed soil volume requires the trees be planted at the lower level of the street, which will require retaining walls in various locations along the corridor where the elevation between the sidewalk and the street are too profound. So I share with you this evening, this slide shows the original wall design that was presented to council last year. And then it was later presented to the Architectural Review Board for their feedback. At their 26th ARB meeting, there was acknowledgement of the need for the walls and functional purpose. However, a few concerns were conveyed, such as posing a potential trip hazard, diverting attention away from historic buildings, and tending to create history where it did not originally exist. As a follow-up to that meeting, staff again presented three new options to the board in November last year, which included a variety of groupings of individual walls that are rectangular, angular, and elliptical in nature. This slide shows the rectangular grouping that is broken up by singular tree and double tree wells. This option depicts the same rectangular design with only single trees in each bed and well. This type of design depicts the angular grouping broken up by singular and double tree wells. And this slide shows the same angular design with only single trees in each of the bed well. This next slide shows the elliptical grouping broken up by singular and double tree groupings. And this slide represents the same elliptical design with only single trees in each of the bed well. Overall, the board was supportive of the revised designs with a consensus to include a mixture of the larger and smaller tree wells. Preferences, however, did vary related to the actual shape of the wells. I would say that from a structural standpoint, the rectangular wall is preferred. However, staff is here this evening to see council's design preference and direction prior to moving forward. With that, I'll turn it over for discussion and questions.
Great, thanks, Matt. And, you know, I do want to take a minute and thank the ARB. I want them to know that from all of council, that their opinion is really important to us. And that, no, you know, maybe we didn't have to send this to them, but we wanted to. And, you know, we so appreciate the work that happens from our boards and commissions. And I'd just like to extend to them from all of council how much we appreciate the work that they, and the thoughtfulness that they delivered on this particular item. And, you know, as in most things, when we go through the process, things end up being better. And I think this will be no exception to that rule. So if you can pass that on to them, and we will try to do the same. So I do want to take a moment for a public comment. Ann, have we received any public comment on this through the clerk's office?
No, we have not.
Thank you. And Sue, have we received any through the web?
We have not.
Appreciate that. Okay, council questions and discussion?
I'm inclined to go ahead with the recommendation of ARB and I think the linear solution is probably as good as any, thank you.
For me, this is purely a taste thing. I like option B combo with the angular thing, multi-tree and angular swoop down to the street. Not that one, go back, that one. Is that B, Matt?
That is B.
Yeah, that, and the other one is the one I would vote. It's purely a personal preference.
Thanks. We have Greg and John. Anyone else like to chime in? I think they, I think they are in consensus, is that correct, John?
Yes.
Great. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to like, I like the multi, but I like the elliptical. ARB was divided, although there were three that liked the elliptical. I think it has a more natural feel, a softer feel than the angular. But I understand, you know, engineering would like, would like more the angular. But I like the softer feel of the elliptical. So that's my vote.
Other comments?
Yeah. Hey, Matt, I had a quick question. I'm assuming, but I'm going to ask the question, there would be no height difference from the sidewalk elevation on any of these options, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier that engineering had a recommendation.
If they were to prefer one, they would prefer the angular model.
Can you tell? What's the reason for that, Matt?
The reason that I, the way I understand it is the angular is completely up against the sidewalk, providing more support, whereas this has argued that the wall itself is not up against the structure of the sidewalk.
Yeah, it would probably be an integrity issue.
So over time, it's going to, it's going to do better, right?
Correct.
Okay, then for that reason, I would support that. And for what it's worth, I think the multiple and mixing them up, but I think the multiple, and if we look at this particular image up here is, has a quite, you know, is good to have more than one. But I would say if structurally, that's the approach, that would be, that would be my preference. Thank you.
I would concur, and this is more just from my own personal aesthetics. I prefer the angular with the multiple.
Option B for me.
Thanks for that, everyone. I would agree, option B combo would be mine as well. And I think it's probably truer to what you might see built in that era. You probably would not see as much of the curvilinear built in a historic district as you would something more angular. So I think that it bodes to the integrity of the district and the integrity of the wall. So, okay, let's see. And I will make a motion to approve staff recommendation and to designate, oh, the name down, I'll make it fast, angular combo multi-B, I think it was?
That's correct.
As preferred shape and style of the walls. With that, is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, John. Ann, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And again, many thanks to staff and to our ARB for coming up with a solution that makes, will make the project even better than it was initially. So, okay, next up on our agenda, under other is the 2035 framework update. And our staff report will be from Homer Rogers. He's coming? There he is.
Yes. Okay, yeah, so before you, you know, you should have had in your packet the memo that was drafted. And in this, you will see a lot of the same stuff that you have seen previously. However, we tried to summarize the background, what we're trying to do with the community plan, that this is to not necessarily reinvent it, but to actually modernize it, reorganize, you know, much of the plan to match the framework that we're pursuing and so on and so forth. When last we met, you know, with council on the subject, we went through an exercise of trying to describe, you know, the guiding principles of Dublin and went through a word, you know, exercise of trying to describe what Dublin was about. And from that, you know, as you read through the documents, we get to a, what Brandon and Deviani, you know, have compiled as a set of guiding principles based upon the word exercise that we went through. And you can see, they drew out several principal names and then kind of looped and grouped the other words that kind of fit with that. So you got beautiful, connected, inclusive, innovative, and on down through the line there. And you can see the other words that are with that. And then associated with that, to make it a guiding principle with each of these principal names was a set of actions that we would deem appropriate to fit with those principles, to use as our guide, you know, moving forward, actually looking at the 2035 framework. Continuing on to page four, you know, with it, you see where we're at in the timeline. There's a little red arrow in there that kind of describes where we're at in our process. And what we're suggesting at this point in time is that we start working, you know, with staff, probably starting with a, I know we initially had a retreat scheduled that was discussed with February 18th, 19th timeframe. And I do believe Kathy has had a conversation with everybody. And there's been a decision to maybe postpone that till later on in the year. However, we do think we should probably have, you know, maybe a lower scale workshop to review the guiding principles that have been proposed. And then also look at, you know, the work going forward in terms of the themes that we're looking at for the 2035 framework process. So you can see there, the first quarter, first and second quarters is kind of the things that are, you know, laid out there for us to tackle. And ultimately, you know, working with staff and the committees and align them with those four, you know, major areas of quality of life, land use, economic infrastructure, and looking at providing some more guidance into each one of those four buckets moving forward, you know, as we progress through this over the course of the next year. That's a very brief summary. Kathy, Dana, Jenny, anything you want to add to this?
Thank you, Homer. What I appreciate is, boy, this is a, this is a big project, right? And the only way we're going to get there, I guess similar to our conversation about historic, the district is to put it into chunks and to work our way through it. So I sincerely appreciate the staff's effort to put this into quarterly work requirements so that by first quarter of 2022, we're at a place where we have the framework put forward. So I sincerely appreciate that. And I know the different committees, as we were talking about tonight, will then get activated to move this forward. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate, I looked at the overall guiding principles that you guys pulled together, and that is a very ambitious list. But that's what's going to make the framework such a terrific document for us is that if is that if we're able to do that. And under the actions, if you strung all those actions together into a long sentence, it makes it to be the kind of place that you really want to live. So I appreciate staff's on this, and I look forward to council's hard work in moving that ahead. We will talk about the timing of the retreat in, at our administration update tonight. But I think it would make sense to use some of that February time to, to do the next step forward. So thank you very, very much, and I appreciate staff's work on this, Homer. Thank you.
You're muted, Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Want to take a second before we continue that conversation to stop in with the clerk's office and with Sue to make sure that we heard any public comment relative to this.
Right. Nothing was submitted here.
Thank you. And Sue?
Nothing online. Thank you.
Okay. And further, council, I think Jane may have had her hand up before we went.
You know, I, I, I am very excited about the 2035 framework plan. I, I do think that we don't want to lose any time as a council to discuss this during the first quarter. One of the things that struck me, though, is, and it's, it says here in the paragraph that there is a, this is a working draft. But on the actions, you know, I especially think that when we're going to use these words like, like beautiful, and my, my computer just froze. Beautiful, intentional, connected, and action plans. You know, I would ask council that as we go forward, that, that we describe what that is. Because it's difficult to, to think of the word beautiful because beautiful can mean a variety of things. Does that describe our community? Does it describe our buildings, our public spaces? So if we're using those guiding principles, you know, I'd like to see us kind of define what that is. And the same thing with the action plan. For instance, connected. Connected can mean connecting people. It also can mean connecting us by broadband internet. It can mean connecting us by the way we take care of and care for each other. I know that needs to be broadened, but I, but I just bring this forward that as we start to look at these guiding principles, that we well define them, that we're specific about what it is so that we can use them and actually in real time, apply them as we use it for criteria, no matter what we, what decision or policy we make, that we have a well-defined definition of our guiding principles and the action plans that follow those. Because what I've found right now, you know, in, in different times, when I go back to the community plan, that they're great characteristics, but they're not applicable. We don't have a good measuring stick to understand just exactly how to apply them. So, so I just want to bring that forward, that as we talk about this, that to be more definitive in how we describe these guiding principles and action plans.
You, you raise a good point on the connectivity, and I think it was intentionally used as a word that would describe many things. It can mean physically, digitally, relationally, supportively, you know, all of those different things. And I think the intent was is to capture that in one word.
Right. And that, and that, you're, you're exactly right. A connected community is a catchall for many, many things. So therefore, in the action plan, follow through with examples of all of that so that as we move forward, and any council member coming forward, going forward, knows what we mean by a connected community.
That's a great point.
Thanks.
Other comments? Andy?
I was just going to say, Jane brought up the word beautiful. I don't remember having that word as one of our choices. And looking back at the little post-it, the virtual post-it notes, I don't see beautiful. I don't know that that is the best title for that section. Chris, to your point, you know, the section gives you a multitude of different options when, within that section. I just don't know that beautiful is, is the correct heading.
Right. Certainly would be in the eye of the beholder. Other thoughts, comments? My computer either froze or you all got really quiet on me. I'm not entirely certain which.
I think we got quiet.
Yeah.
The plan, the plan says we don't do anything as a council until the third or fourth quarter. But what I'm hearing from all of you is we should probably get on this sooner rather than later. So Kathy, I think you've got ideas as to when that might be.
No, the, the next step for us would be February next month.
Okay.
Is the next act. Yeah.
I think we've all talked about or had the conversation about postponing our retreat because of the effectiveness of a Zoom retreat is questionable at best. But I do believe we could make some headway on a singular topic like this. So perhaps we take one of those days that is set aside for a retreat and dedicate it to discussion of the framework plan. And then maybe perhaps the clerk's office can be reaching out, and we can look for an additional two days that would, you know, perhaps in the, in the third quarter of the year that we could have our more formal retreat.
I love that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody? I know Kathy's had those conversations informally with all of you. Okay. Great, Homer. Well, thanks for that. Kathy, thank you for putting together the memo and, and all of that information. It's really helpful, and hopefully it will set us up for a really good work session on those topics and prioritizing and so on and so forth. And then Anne, if you could make note of it, for Jenny, probably, to circulate some dates. I, I know that July is a month that we typically don't have extensive meetings. So I guess we would be looking into August at that point in time for a retreat. Hopefully by then, you'll be able to do full in-person retreat. Okay, anything else on that from anyone? Okay, well, that will bring us to Dana magically appeared on my screen. So that brings us to staff comments. Dana?
I only have, I only want to say Happy New Year. And I just am really glad 2020 is over like we all are, but have a lot of hope and confidence and excitement about 2021. I hope you all have the same. So we're looking forward to it. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Dana, I, I know there's been discussion, and you probably saw the email of inquiry about vaccinations. So I'm assuming that we will get some sort of communication out of the role that we play, the abilities that we have, and in the direction that we've been given from our governing agency for health.
Yeah, we, we will do that. We will continue to promote that as more and more information becomes available.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, council committee reports. Start with the planning and zoning commission. Jane?
No, we'll have our first meeting this Thursday.
Great. Thank you. Admin, Kathy? Had a busy night?
Yeah, we have. We have been busy tonight. So thank you very much. We'll work on moving those retreat rates out to where we can meet together. So that'll be fantastic. In your packet this evening, we put a written memo update of the last admin committee meeting we met as a group on December 4th. Had two major topics. One of those, our continuing conversation about community engagement, but particularly with a flavor of what have we learned during the pandemic about how to engage with the community as a council to the community and as the community to staff? What have we learned through technology? And how can we think about taking some of the things we've learned and, and really engaging where the residents expect us to be, that is in person and online? So what you will see on that memo is some ideas for that. And you also see staff's, and thank you very much for staff's, willing to reach out and to each of us and gather some information and bring that back to council. And at that point, we would bring some specific recommendations for consideration to full council on that. The second topic that we talked about was how do we explore ideas with our boards and commissions? One, to raise visibility, but two, to help us with the ongoing work of recruiting, building a bench, and then helping with onboarding and work of that group. So you'll see several action items in the memo. We had, I think, some very good things that we can do, I believe, fairly short term, that can help us along that way. So again, thanks to staff for their work on that. And I will then ask the other committee members, Christina or Jane, if there are other things that you wanted to add to that report.
I don't necessarily have anything to add to it. I think that it was, I think, a really welcome conversation. I look forward to being able to take a look at Zen City. As they, you know, Sue said that they could make that available to council members. I think that'd be really helpful for us. And just taking a little bit more of a concerted and structured approach to being able to communicate on a more regular basis with anyone who really wants to communicate with us. And I, we did talk a little bit more about having the ability to reach out to some of the more diverse areas in our community. So I wanted to make sure that that was mentioned as well because it's really, really important, especially today.
Yeah, and the only thing that I would add here is that I think that having this conversation with communication was, was very important because it, it gave us the opportunity to understand what the technologies are that they're using that we're not aware of yet. It's, it's many of the technologies that we asked for last year, and, and they're moving forward with them. But they're so efficient at it, and there's so many things that they're using that we need to catch up and have a learning curve, help us understand how we can, how we can utilize them as council and as a whole. And then also, as Christina said, I think there are many elements. Right now, the only way, we do it the old-fashioned way. You have to call up or text an HOA president. There's got to be many, many ways that we can get better connections with our constituents by understanding what's going on through technology and through utilizing much of the communication. So I think just having this conversation is going to help us a lot. So it was very beneficial.
Great. Okay, community development committee, John?
Hey, meeting scheduled, I, the next championship night would be the 11th. And since our team is going to star in this thing and hopefully bring home victory, do we want to move that up to like 4 o'clock and try to be done with it? Would that be agreeable to the committee members?
By me?
That be next?
I think 4 is good.
4 o'clock. Okay. Schedule it for 4 then, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Good catch, John.
Thanks, John. A finance committee, Christina?
Uh, nothing right now. Matt and I are trying to work on getting the schedule and rough agendas finalized for the year. So hopefully we'll get those out to you guys at the next meeting.
Appreciate that. No, you've got some challenges there. So speedy recovery. All right, public services, Jane?
Nope, nothing right now.
Coda, Kathy?
Uh, thank you. I just had one thing. As many of you may be aware, Coda was one of the very few public transit companies across the US that not only has been able to provide continuous, non-stop public transportation during the pandemic, but also provided it at no fare so that there were really no barriers for folks to be able to get to where they needed to go for service or work. But as you can imagine, given financial realities that, you know, the no fare cannot be something that continues indefinitely. So Coda continues to provide excellent service, continues to work on ensuring safety and cleanliness on the buses during this period. And effective the 11th of January, they're going to reinstate fairs. So the team has just done a, a lot. But it, it's important for folks to know that effective the 11th of January, fairs will be back. So thanks, and again, thanks to that group.
Thanks, Kathy. I will give a brief update on the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission and Kama. We have a Kama meeting on January the 8th. I will get, and prior to our next meeting, I will let you, I will distribute some of the topics for that meeting. And then Morphy does not meet again until January the 20th. So Logan Union Champagne, Andy?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. 33 corridor, Kathy and Jane?
Uh, yeah, thank you. So we had a meeting, oh, in December, before Christmas, I'll put it. And I just wanted to, just to highlight a couple of things. That during the pandemic, because of really the, the innovativeness of the district and the hard work of all of the staff and the partners up and down, you know, it continues to have very robust interest in development from both commercial and retail up and down that corridor, which is continued fabulous. We spent the bulk of the meeting on sort of the second item. I wanted to update you in this, and that is we got an update on Union County's 2020 transportation and mobility study. And we had some conversation tonight about the importance of mobility, and they've undertaken a multi-year study. So we had a nice update on that, and it really covered everything from connected vehicles to bike paths that would go from Dublin all the way up to Marysville, et cetera. And really the look at how do we expand and think about public transit as we're doing some planning up and down that corridor. So it was very nice to be able to do that with our colleagues and to really talk about how we can coordinate and bring that forward together. So look forward as that plan moves from a planning phase into a potential funding and then execution phase. But it was very nice. And again, a continued importance of collaboration as we think about these future states. So I appreciate the group's effort on that. So thanks.
Great. Thank you for that update. And we may have some changes coming to that committee. So we will, we will look forward to hearing more about that at our next meeting. Arts council, John?
Nothing.
Okay. Board of Education, Greg? Is he on anyone else's screen?
He's muted and, oh, he's disconnected.
Okay, we will, he might be having some internet troubles. So let's move on to Washington Township, Jane?
Right. I, I talked to the chief today. They were able to have a good portion of their staff, of their fire department vaccinated. They had their first injections of the COVID Moderna vaccine. They are seeing a significant increase in the number of COVID cases that they're responding to. It's not taxing their resources, but he wanted to be sure that the public knew that they are seeing a significant increase. They're, they want to thank the public for adapting to them coming to the, to the scene of any emergency dressed in what is very scary-looking gear. All the PPE that they wear can be a little bit frightening to people. So people just need to understand, and, and they say people are very understanding of the fact that they have to wear all of that gear. They are also concerned that people are worried about calling them for emergencies. There's probably fear out there as to not wanting to go to hospitals or not wanting to burden the fire department with, with calls for things that they think may not be important. But the chief and the fire department wants everyone to know that, that you are not burdening them. Any emergency, any concern you have, that is what they're there for. They want you to call them. And when they, when they get there, the person that calls always has the option of going to the hospital or not. So please don't be afraid to call and get help if you need it. And then the last thing is, they're getting a lot of questions about how people can help. You can't bring food to the fire department or the police department. But the chief said that if you want to do something, if the public wants to do something to thank their first responders, make a donation in their name to the Dublin Food Pantry. Do something like that because they really appreciate that. Write a note if you'd like, but, but they feel that they're, that they're blessed enough with, with cookies and candies and things like that for their families so that if you want to do something, then there's always other places like the Dublin Food Pantry to do it in their name. So, so all I can say is they're, they're doing a great job, and they're hanging in there. And, and they really want to make sure that you know that they're there for you.
Great. Thanks. I'm going to back up. It looks like Greg resolved his technical difficulties. So Board of Education, Greg?
Thank you, Chris. A couple of things from Dr. Holy. They are posting a new position. The inclusion of the schools. That will be posted January 11th. They hope to fill the position sometime in April and start in June, ready for next school year. So I'm sure anybody that wants additional information, you can go to their website and get additional information about that posting. The fifth middle school has now been officially named Eversol, E-V-E-R-S-O-L. The fifth middle school has now been officially named Eversole, E-V-E-R-S-O-L-E Run, Eversole Run, and that will open August 2021. They are also assisting in the distribution of vaccines. I guess over 500 local safety service and healthcare personnel were vaccinated at, by the Franklin County Board of Health at Kaufman High School on December the 30th, and they are, this is amazing, they are expecting to have all Dublin city school employees vaccinated by February the first, so within the next three and a half weeks. They are mobilizing an enormous effort, and, and it, it, as impressive as General McDaniels is and the operation he runs, I'm always reminded that Todd Holy has more employees than the city of Dublin, and then on top of that, they've got, you know, upwards of 10,000 students that they're concerned about as well. So Dr. Holy continued to do a phenomenal job of shepherding this organization through this pandemic, and I am certain, as with our city, with Dana at the helm, we will be just fine. I'm, I'm sure that the schools will be just fine as well with Dr. Holy. That's all I have, thank you.
Appreciate that, Greg. Okay, we'll go back to Jane, Dublin Bridges.
Nope, nothing to report.
Thank you, and Veterans Committee, John?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to rename it Round Screen. So Round Screen, I will start with Andy.
Well, at, at the risk of making this council meeting a love fest, I just have to say, good riddance to 2020, and thank you to all the, the city staff that did so much to make it seem like it was business as usual in a lot of ways, and bring events to our, to our residents, really above and beyond, and, you know, uninterrupted, first-class service. So again, thank you to, to all the staff that, that worked so hard for us, and Happy New Year.
Thanks, Andy. Jane?
I also, I, yes, we might as well get on the bandwagon, but it's so true. I mean, I, I think back on this past year and what our staff has done to keep this city going, and the innovative and creative ideas to lift the spirits and all the fun things. I mean, we definitely do go by our guiding principles. We are beautiful, we are connected, we are innovative, we are resilient, we are all those things, and, and they know how to apply them. So, so thanks, staff. We, we really appreciate it, and I know this city knows why Dublin is the best place to live.
Thanks, Jane. John?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to, again, wish everybody a Happy New Year, but I'd like to acknowledge Bill Sherman, and Bill passed away right before the holidays, and our condolences and thanks to Bill and his family. He was a landscape architect from District Six and served on many of the innovative and beginning and creative committees that helped define the city. Just a really great guy and very, very powerful, and I'm sure everyone's going to, so just a salute to Bill Sherman and his family. Thank you.
Appreciate that. John, Greg? You're muted. You're muted, Greg?
Got it. Just a, I, I'd like to express my appreciation to Runkie. You know, we have a lot of contractors in this community that we contract with as a city, and their collection is constantly, from what I see, very impressive. It doesn't matter whether it's there's snow on the roads, or, you know, these guys are getting out of this truck and they are picking up heavy bags full of garbage and getting them into the truck. They do it on time, they do it professionally, and when I have the opportunity to stop them when they're on my street and, and just express my appreciation, I do. And so maybe Megan, if you're listening, if you could let them know. I mean, they were already by this morning picking up Christmas trees, so they, they are a fantastic partner of our community, and I greatly appreciate what it is that they do for us. Happy New Year, everybody, and stay safe.
Thanks, Greg. Christina?
Thanks, yes, Happy New Year, and yes, thank you to staff. Thank you to so many people. 2020 has been a challenge, for sure, and I know we still have some road ahead of us and new challenges we'll face as we get into 2021, but it's already started off on a better foot. So I hope everyone has an opportunity to stay safe. The kids can be in school, looks like that's the direction we're headed, so that's a huge plus. And just thanks to all the rest of you, council, and, and to our phenomenal staff who've done an incredible job at managing those vendors and managing all of the things that they've had to manage, and, and to Dana for taking the leadership there. We couldn't have been in better hands. So thanks, everybody, super looking forward to this next year. Thank you for all the well wishes after my ankle surgery. I appreciate that too, because that truly has been a literal pain. So thank you to everybody, Happy New Year. It's going to be a really good year. I'm cautious, but I'm very optimistic.
Every time that somebody says, well, '21 can't be worse, I say, oh, please don't. How many times this year did we think nothing could get worse, and it did? So, yep. Kathy?
Yes, thanks very much. I wanted to take the opportunity, Chris and I were able to join, I'm guessing it's called a Zoom retirement, is that how you do retirements on Zoom? I don't know, but two of our colleagues, fellow commissioners, Union County Commissioner Steve Stolti and Charles Hall retired, and so we were able to, I think that was my first Zoom retirement, and it was just a lovely tribute to all they've done, and they've just been great partners, and I wanted to wish them the, say thank you and wish them a great retirement. And the same note, as we enter 2021, I want to say welcome, and we're excited to work with the two new Union County Commissioners, Steve Robinson and Dave Burke, who will join Commissioner Schmink, and we look very forward to working with them as well. And I will also share my appreciation for, for all that the staff has done this year, and we are going to have a great 2021, no doubt. So thanks.
Uh, well, thank you all, and I'd also like to take a moment to remember our own Jeff Jenkins, who passed, who was a very longtime city employee, probably the longest-serving employee that I ever, that I'm aware of. I remember him from when I was a little kid and at school with his kids, and so certainly want to pass our condolences on to he and his family and thank them for sharing him with us for so long. So we certainly do appreciate that. And with that, if there is nothing more for the good of the order, Happy New Year to all, and to all a good night.